All right, welcome everybody. Sorry, hot mic. I can't, I can't help myself but project, sorry, it's part of my day job. Welcome everyone here, this is Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty five, welcome to our regular Oakwood Board of Education meeting. And Ms. Sauber, could you take the role?
Ms. Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Ms. Kawhi.
Here.
Dr. Middleton.
Here.
Mr. Ryder Garcia.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here. Would you all please rise and join us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, could I get a motion, please, to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Ms. Sauber?
Ms. Di Lorenzo.
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi.
Aye.
Dr. Middleton.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder Garcia.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye. Could I also get a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October thirteenth, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting and work session?
So moved.
Ms. Sauber?
Who is the second, sorry, okay. Uh, Mr. Ryder Garcia.
Aye.
Ms. Di Lorenzo.
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi.
Aye.
Dr. Middleton.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye. Next up is item F, public hearing for comments regarding retire, rehire of Paul Stone, Amanda Amor, Karen Lauterbach, and Scott Goudy. We will now open the public hearing as required by Ohio law regarding the proposed reemployment of a retiree. In accordance with Ohio Revised Code, section three, three, zero, seven, point, three, five, three, the Oakwood Board of Education is holding this public hearing to allow input on the proposed reemployment of the following: Paul Stone, Oakwood High School math teacher, Karen Lauterbach, Oakwood Junior High School math teacher, Scott Goudy, sixth grade math teacher, I'm sorry, sixth grade teacher, and Amanda Amor, uh, Oakwood High School social studies teacher. This hearing provides opportunity for members of the public to offer comments on the issue of reemployment. Please note that this hearing is limited to receiving public input. If anyone wishes to address the board on this topic, please state your name and address for the record before making your comments. Are there any public comments tonight? Seeing as there are none, this concludes the public hearing on the proposed list of retire, rehire employees. This takes us to item number two, reports and public comments.
Yes, for my superintendent's report, um, I'd like to, uh, ask, uh, Karen Lauterbach to, to go to the podium, and as she walks up, uh, to be recognized, um, I am thrilled to recognize Oakwood Junior High School's Karen Lauterbach, the recipient of the prestigious Linda M. Gojak Award for the Ohio, from the Ohio Council of Teacher of Mathematics. This accolade honors exceptional middle school math teachers across Ohio, and we believe it has found, um, its perfect recipient in Karen, a teacher whose profound impacts extends far beyond the classroom. Karen is the epitome of dedication and positivity, possessing an extraordinary ability to inspire a love of learning in her students. Whether she's guiding them through Desmos explorations or facilitating critical thinking tasks at the boards, um, or offering extra support, her commitment is unwavering, ensuring every student has the ability and the opportunity to grow as a thinker and a problem solver, fostering invaluable confidence in her ability to tackle challenges. Beyond the classroom, Karen is a true lifelong learner and a fierce advocate for continuing, uh, professional developments, actively serving on our district's, uh, PDC. She's also been a driving force behind transformative initiatives, including leading book studies on influential works like The Mathematical Mindsets and Building Thinking Classrooms. As, and as an instructional leader, she emphasizes fostering growth mindsets where mistakes are embraced as learning opportunities, promoting collaborative inquiry-based learning and empowering students to critically understand the world around them through the lens of math. Um, just truly appreciate her, I get a chance to, uh, visit her in her classroom at times. Kids are, are, are always being stretched in their thinking, um, and I've seen, um, just, uh, got a chance to attend the actual OCTM dinner where she received, uh, her award, and, uh, just to hear the kind comments that came from other, other people that have worked with her was just pretty, uh, pretty cool to see. So, um, asked her to give, uh, a couple, uh, of words just to share, and then we'll have a certificate for her, we'll have her come up, and board members, if you'd like to come around, we'll get a picture.
Well, since you haven't said, say a few things, um, I had to write kind of a reflection after I was nominated, so I can read a couple of those things if that's okay. So, uh, I was very fortunate to have received excellent math education instruction at the start of my career. Johnny Hill was not only my advisor at Miami University, and also yours, um, but he was also my methods instructor. I learned from the get-go about how to teach mathematics for meaning and through a problem-based approach. As I continued on this journey as a participant in the Ohio Project Discovery at Ohio State during the summer, too, in my first and second year as a middle school teacher. I did take a, the year leave, and then I went back to Miami, working for Dr. Hill again. And my master's research project focused on constructivism as a learning theory. But also, I've been super lucky, um, over the years to be able to work at school districts that have supported, um, using inquiry instruction. I've also had access to great, uh, curriculum materials, um, that have really supported this type of instruction and helped, um, uh, um, each of, or reach those goals. Much of my, uh, professional growth as a teacher has continued to move forward with as a foundation. Around the twenty-year mark in my career, I certified as a national board, um, certified teacher, and I've, um, also, you know, worked with Mrs. Amor to recertify, um, uh, so I am a current, uh, certificate holder. Let's see, what else do I want to say? So you kind of mentioned the book study, et cetera. So, and then over the, um, last few years, I've tried to implement many of the things that we did in our, the, uh, book studies, many of them started with OCTM summer studies that they have. But, so, I'd just like to close by saying, it's my hope that the students I've taught over the years have left my classroom seeing the value, importance, and beauty of mathematics. Additionally, it's my hope that my colleagues that I've worked with over my career have considered me to be a supporter and advocate of, um, and a mentor of effective and worthwhile mathematical professional development, just like was modeled for me all those years ago with Dr. Hill. Thank you.
The whole, the, yep, it's the school board, yeah, the whole school board, it's fine. Okay, and in keeping with my report, uh, wanted to give you an update on the Artificial Intelligence Task Force you've heard, uh, it asked about, um, and probably received some information. Obviously, things are going on from a national, international spotlight on, you know, how are we gonna navigate artificial intelligence? Well, I'm pleased to share that we have an update from our AI committee group, which met for the first time last Tuesday during the district's dedicated professional development time. This committee is the next step in our efforts to employ AI in support of our shared vision and mission. When we talk about the idea about together we learn, together we achieve, and together we prepare students for tomorrow. Uh, the committee led by Jenna Hill and Matt Sproat is structured and led by the AI Thought Leaders Program, which serves as the foundation for creating our AI vision and an integration roadmap, and in part, um, partnership with district leadership is facilitated by Forward Edge. Forward Edge is professional trainers developed and lead Google's own training nationwide, working with school districts as well as universities such as NYU, Notre Dame, Carnegie Mellon, UCLA, and conferences like the International Society for Technology and Education Conference, ISTI, uh, as experts in the education of implementation of AI. Uh, the AI Thought Leaders Program, uh, equips staff to leverage AI both safely and effectively, and this objective is broken down in four core areas: building AI literacy, growing AI skills, creating AI guidelines, and leading and collaborating within the district. So during the first meeting last week, the committee focused on establishing a foundational understanding of AI. Uh, the team first, uh, started with an introduction of AI, then they moved to understanding AI capabilities and limitations. They wrapped their time with the best practices of using large language models, LLMs, um, for that. So, we're excited, we'll continue to kind of share updates as that goes forward. It is not a, uh, destination, I would say by any means, uh, you know, as, as they take a look at developing guidelines and a roadmap and a definition, uh, we know that AI is gonna continue to change, and, and, and obviously, things are gonna spread out, and so we will have that, uh, core team that's gonna be able to kind of help navigate things, uh, from a district perspective, and then we'll be able to share that a, across the district as well. So the goal is obviously our staff to go to a certain level of learning and understanding, and then we'll get to a place where we, when we feel comfortable, to be able to figure out what, what does that look like with our students, and what, what looks to be appropriate. No answers at the time on that, we want to make sure our team gets comfortable first, uh, but I would say laying a, a strong foundation's important, and we're on the, we're on the right road with that. Would also like to share an update to the portrait of a learner, uh, process that we've been doing. Uh, we're progressing steadily, anchored by a deep commitment, uh, to stakeholder feedback and collective visioning. We've had a number of, uh, staff feedback, student feedback, community feedback, um, got to share that in the work session, and all the different things that are happening in there, when it comes to the number of fingerprints that we're having. We're looking for about four to six or seven, uh, mindsets and dispositions that we would want to identify, uh, across the district. So in addition to making sure our students are prepared, uh, with the, uh, knowledge from this, uh, curriculum on, uh, what they should know and what they should be able to do, this, this would be durable skills that we want students to be able to have. And, um, being able to put those on paper and write those down and overtly share those things are, are gonna be very important. So, we're, we've got a second core team meeting next week, or sorry, this week, later this week, um, we're gonna start, uh, getting some feedback on what's the design's gonna look like, and then, uh, the community should be looking for maybe a survey in the next couple of weeks to give some feedback to that, and we'll continue to make some iterative process to, to, uh, get to a final draft, and, and then, the goal is to be able to, uh, make it public and, and, uh, share it at our, uh, March State of the Schools. We're gonna do that again, so we'll, we'll kind of share it there. Uh, PD, PD Day recap. I'm pleased to provide an update on the highly successful professional development day held last week. Um, the efforts spearheaded by our outstanding curriculum director, Jenna Hill, um, whose leadership ensured a high-quality, relevant experience for all of our staff. Um, she works closely with, uh, her assistant, uh, Megan Willis, and the, um, Professional Development Committee. They designed a day that balanced innovative instruction with critical compliance needs. Uh, there was a wide, wide array of learning activities that started at, at the building levels, uh, and then went district-wide on STEM training, uh, along with an integration of, uh, augmented reality, uh, there was a session about that. Also, uh, special education continues to be a focus, uh, uh, working through that. Major focus is also on team building and building level and subject-specific alignment with collaborative work. Uh, we saw staff, uh, that were able to, I, I personally believe that when staff are teaching and learning with other staff, um, it's powerful, and you could feel that it was infectious because of that. Um, so just really appreciate Jenna and, uh, her assistant in the committee for, for putting together such a phenomenal day. We had a community coffee update, uh, co- community coffee last week. I held it, uh, at Dorothy Lane Market. We had heard feedback, uh, uh, through social media to put some evening options together, and so we've done that. No one attended last week's feedback, um, unofficially or officially. Uh, Deb was there to, to support, um, but we haven't had great attendance, uh, there. And it's all, continue to monitor attendance, um, and then I'll decide if we, I want to continue an evening option. I'll tell you that it just happened to fall on a fall sports banquet that I missed and wasn't able to attend. There's always amazing things that are happening across the district, and I'd rather use my time valuably, uh, being in other places where our, our students are, um, and our community is. So, um, not at this time, uh, canceling any of them yet, but, uh, if I don't continue to get, um, attendance, then I'll, I'll, I'll look at something different for that. And then finally, uh, for, for my update, I just want to share a little bit about the Rubicon House update, our, our district office. Little over two months ago, I made the decision to temporarily relocate our district office from twenty Rubicon Road. Uh, the action was a direct response to immediate health and safety concerns that made the historic house an unsuitable work environment. In addition to treating those immediate concerns, we also assessed the significant longstanding challenges of the house, including the increasing maintenance costs and the historic home structural and accessibility limitations that are not ADA compliant. There's currently one floor jack in the basement, supporting the sagging first-floor structure, and additional two-floor jacks should be added in another area of the basement to support a significant dip in the conference room on the first floor. The house has also experienced flooding in the basement, um, in the basement, along with ongoing issues with the HVAC system and persistent and worsening roof problems. So the district office serves not only as office space, but it's the primary point of contact for many essential services, while also acting as a central hub for district administration. It's more than just office space. It provides background checks for volunteers and staff, employment processing and volunteer registration, offers workspace for Oakwood Schools Foundation and the alumni staff, and maintains a conference room for district-level meetings, including those related to district operations, curriculum alignment, professional learning, employment, community engagement, licensure verification, and district finances. Currently, we have twelve district personnel, uh, who are operating out of two classrooms at Smith Elementary, and we're utilizing meeting spaces in our other schools across the district as well as in our community. And while this ensures our essential services continue, we've experienced disruption to our efficiency and work that is not a suitable long-term plan. So over the past two months, we've also been working to find a more, uh, permanent solution. We evaluated several options, including a complete renovation of the Rubicon House and securing a more suitable space within the, while also looking at, uh, other spaces within the city of Oakwood. One of our top priorities is always to use school funds to support our schools, student instruction, and safety. Yet we also owe it to our community, visitors, and our district staff to provide a permanent office space that is safe, fully accessible, and efficient. After consulting with an architect to determine our needs, it became clear that renovating the Rubicon House would not be a wise investment. The building has underlying structural issues that would require significant and costly repairs, and even after spending money to address these areas, we'd still have an office space that doesn't function well for our needs, and would still have to incur unanticipated costs that have increased due to the aging house. This doesn't just require additional funds, but also disrupts work activities. After reviewing the available options in Oakwood, I'm recommending a seven-year lease of office space at Sugar Camp. This space will provide a safer, more secure, and efficient environment for our s- staff and our visitors, and at this time, leasing the space allows us to assess our school's facilities, determine if there's a more feasible and long-term option from a, for a permanent location in the future. If you approve the lease tonight, we will begin the process of transitioning to the new space in the spring, and we'll continue, communicate this once we are fully settled. Staff and community members can continue to reach out to us at Smith Elementary School if there are any district-level questions or needs that they have. And that concludes my report. Sorry, I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep going. Uh, next, we're gonna go to, um, this, we've, uh, we kind of had a, a little bit of a, a pause on this, but I'm, I'm happy to bring back the curriculum report. This is our first one for this school year, and I'm gonna ask Jenna Hill to come to the podium to introduce our, um, speaker and, and presenters.
All right, good evening. Thank you for your patience, as, uh, I am, as Wendy said, we are three months now on the job, on the new job, uh, and so this is something that I'm very excited to bring back. Uh, and I'm very, very excited to introduce, uh, Mrs. Amanda Amor and her students. She is gonna present to you tonight on a relatively new class to Oakwood High School, AP Human Geography, uh, but I'm really excited because there is a student's, uh, development, philanthropy, um, work aspect to it that will come after the AP test that she's gonna hit on, uh, and talk a little bit more about. So, I'm very excited Mrs. Amor is here. I have the privilege of working with Mrs. Amor in the Social Studies Department, so thank you so much, and the floor is yours.
I'm so excited to be here. I didn't know that there had been a law in this, and, um, I'm just really honored to be sharing my students and their work with you. Teaching this class, AP Human Geography, just for me personally, is kind of a dream come true, because I love, um, all that it has to offer for our students. I started, I want to say thank you to the PDC for supporting my training over the last summer. I was, um, participating in training through College Board for four days, and then, as part of this program, I have five, um, two-hour meetings, Zoom meetings throughout the school year, and we continue the, with the same cohort group to kind of refine our work as we're working with students, so that's a great opportunity. These key instructional strategies are really at the foundation of this class: inquiry, having academic conversations among the students, practicing some critique of their own work and of others' work, and, um, understanding how to incorporate feedback, self-assessment and reflection, authentic product and audience, so you're our audience tonight. We incorporate both traditional AP preparation and assessment, and more holistic, uh, assessments using some of our projects that the students have started, and it's really important that we always include student voice and choice. So our guiding question for this course is, how does the interconnectedness of people and places influence patterns in our world? And we're focusing on, um, several different units, this is kind of a combination of the things we will be studying. We've looked at population and migration, we've looked at cultural patterns, and we're kind of wrapping that up. We're also going to be examining political patterns, urban and rural land use, and all along the way, we're incorporating geography skills, um, you know, knowledge of the world and maps and such, cartography, so we're starting to look at how students can develop their own, um, maps, digital mapping, which is a great aspect of, um, the modern geographer, uh, and it's used in a lot of different industries. So, we've started, um, experimenting with this a little bit, um, to build skills throughout the year. Okay, I would like to introduce my students here. I would like the students first to focus on, um, our first project, the Community Brochure. And we did this project when we looked at, um, building geography skills at the beginning of the year. So I will introduce my students here. Um, one student is ill today, that's Reece Dunnington, so she's not able to be here. We have Nagisa Yoshida, Gwen Erickson, and Kaya Mark. So, uh, I'll hand it over to them.
So first, we made a brochure, um, as you can see, for, um, the class, and the general assignment was to create a brochure that would want, that, that would make other people want to come into Oakwood. So it kind of described like a brief history of Oakwood and like the perks of living here, and kind of like the history, like the fact that we have old houses, and that, you know, some of the places used to be a farm, or like there were old, like NCR, um, areas, and things like that.
Throughout that, we also created like different maps and just different events and places. Oh, pardon me. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, so we also created like different maps and events and places that showcased the benefits of Oakwood. It showed, um, we also showed how there's like a lot of, like, close communities and the good education in schools, and also just like beautiful landscapes and places to go, like how extreme, or like Ashley's Bakery's, or stuff like that, and we showcased that in our brosh- brochure.
This is, uh, one part of the assignment is, we need to create a walking map of Oakwood. I created this for my group using Google My Maps, uh, which I had a little bit of prior experience with. All of the symbols represent, um, things in Oakwood that visitors would likely want to visit, and then the small letters, uh, are the places we describe our brochure, uh, and where to find them, as well as a walking path between them.
Okay, so that was our first, uh, experience, working in the groups and, and, um, getting into this, uh, content of, you know, modern geography skills, and then we moved to population analysis report, and what's called a baby box, so the students are gonna share this with you. I have, um, some sample population reports I'll show to you as well.
So the, basically, the population report is pretty much what it sounds like. It's basically, we chose a country, and we researched a lot about it, especially the different population, um, declines or growths, like fertility rates or birth rates, and like GDP and all of those kind of things. And we created like a report that showcased all of those things, and it related back to what would we make with like the baby box? And the baby box is basically something that like some certain countries use to help, um, support fertility rates, as it can include like a home, food, blanket, and like all the essentials you may need to have a baby, and like let them have a good growth into adulthood. So, we tried to kind of create our own idea of a baby box for each of our own countries. The one that I researched with my group was China, and we looked at the sustainable goal, goals that were created by United Nations, the seventeen goals, and for our country, we decided that the sustainable goal, um, of like climate action and gender equality and decent work were really important, so we made sure to include things in our baby po- box that showcased those things. So that could include like, um, blankets, or we included vouchers, so it'd be easier for parents to like financially support their child, and also, we included like a gender equality book that showcased like gender equality, and we also had like food and like other items, and we had like reusable baby cloths and stuff, so we could support sustainability and climate problems and all that kind of stuff. Oh, yeah, yeah, and the vouchers would just like, it would help with like, um, so people, because mainly the baby box is to help people with like lower income and more, people that struggle more to have child, so the vouchers would provide an incentive for that.
So we had a lot of different countries explored. This box was for China, and it's sort of a prototype, right, of a potential baby box that could be used, and China's really trying to increase their population now, so, um, they're, um, focused on, um, on providing things for families when they're beginning a family. And then finally, the last project we want to highlight is this Country Geographic Magazine, where we're looking at cultural patterns and processes, and here's an example.
My group is doing Germany, mostly because I am German, so, uh, I have a lot of inspiration for this. We have basically, we have four layouts that we, uh, create, one about religion, one about migration, one about, uh, a language and culture. I am writing the language ones, as I do speak German, uh, and I think it's a very, uh, cool thing, uh, to research countries we don't know as much about, or countries we do know a lot about, and we can share, uh, with our classmates.
So this is a timeline we created of like six key events, um, in the German, uh, history. So first, we have the fall of the Roman Empire, because after that, that's when German, Germany start, became like an actual, like, country and formed its own, uh, place. And then we of course have the unification of Germany, and then World War One and World War Two, which are very significant events that changed, um, German, um, Germany's culture. And the fall of the Berlin Wall, um, and now we have the Russian-Ukrainian War. So we try to choose, um, events that were like throughout, um, the history, not just in one time period, although there are more in the nineteen hundreds, but we tried to choose one that was like in the present, and the one was like, it was like in the eighteen hundreds, um, to try to describe Germany's history and also how like it changed culturally.
So, they're still developing these country, um, geographic magazines, and, um, those timelines are really key because they're, they're like a foundation for explaining the modern culture of Germany by tying it into these historical events, for instance. And finally, thank you for being patient here, this is what Mrs. Hill was mentioning. Uh, my students really don't even know about this, so they're at the cutting edge of this information, but I've applied to be part of this AP with We Service program, and this program incorporates service learning into the AP courses. It will be, you know, a pilot year for us, but the goal here is to apply what we've learned throughout the school year, and then once the students have taken the AP exam, they'll be able to participate among themselves in a service project. This year, we'll focus on some advocacy campaigns for different, um, things, including a choice of access to healthcare, or food insecurity and hunger. These are two issues that are supported by We Service, and they also are really well-aligned with our content in human geography. So it has real-life application, it will be on their AP score report if they successfully complete this, so it's, um, something that just brings the content into the real world after, after that test hurdle is, is reached, so. All right, last.
Thank you, any questions?
Yeah, well done. Very thorough. We appreciate it. Yeah. Oh, these are for us to keep, aren't they?
Well, the brochure is, but not the boundary.
I think she said it's okay. Yeah, yeah, she said it's okay.
Thank you very much. That was great.
Yes, and I'm going to allow you and the gift of being able to be excused. If you'd like to, it's a public meeting, so if you want to stay, you can. But if you've got homework or dinner or other things that you need to get to, we just appreciate that you came earlier. But go ahead and feel free to kind of get things wrapped up. Karen, also, you can go celebrate too. We won't be offended if you leave. We totally understand. Again, we appreciate you.
All right, next up is public comments. Seeing as we have no public comments, next up is item number three, board reports. And seeing as we have no board reports, that takes us to item number four, budget and finance.
Good evening. Ooh, gosh, that's loud too. Good evening. Item 4A tonight is your normal financial report that you're accustomed to seeing for the month of October 2025. And then item B, send some revisions to the Certificate of Estimated Resources and the Appropriations for Fiscal Year 26. When we approved these in late summer or very early fall, we didn't have all of our final grant allocations, so that has been updated. And then also, we have started the financing process for the OFCC project. So there's some bond work incorporated into these two documents as well. And so there's going to be more revisions to come because we haven't done the bond sale yet. We've just done the notes. But so know that there's going to be another revision coming probably in the late winter time. But if you would like, Mr. Wilson, you could take those together in one action item.
Can I get a motion for item 4B and 4C, please? Ms. Sauber?
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye. And that takes us to item 5B. Any unfinished, 5B, any unfinished business? Any new business before the board? That takes us to item number seven, administrative reports and superintendent recommendations.
Yes, number seven, letter A. Recommendation is made to approve the amendment to the Competitive Retail Electric Service Agreement from IGS Energy.
Can I get a motion for item 7A, please? Ms. Sauber?
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder Garcia?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Number seven, letter B. Making a recommendation to approve a seven-year agreement to lease properties located at 400 Sugar Camp Circle, Oakwood, Ohio, for district office space.
Recommend, motion, please, for item 7B. Ms. Sauber?
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Number seven, letter C. I recommend the resolution authorizing the school board, school district board to participate in the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, Segment 1.
Can I get a motion for item 7C, please? Ms. Sauber?
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder Garcia?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Number seven, D. I make a recommendation to approve the resolution to adopt the Special Education Model Policies and Procedures.
Items, motion, please, for item 7D. Ms. Sauber?
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And finally, number seven, E. A recommendation to approve Contract 2026.O3.
Can I get a motion for item 7E, please? Ms. Sauber?
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder Garcia?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And that takes us to number eight, Personnel Items, Resignations and Nonrenewals.
Yes, and I'll take number eight, letters A through H, under one motion. I'll go ahead and read the recommended actions for each of the areas. Letter A is the recommendation to accept the following supplemental resignations for the 25-26 school year. You'll see three supplementals there. Letter B is the retirement of Karen Stevens, to accept her retirement resignation for Karen Stevens for her position as occupational therapist, effective June 30th, 2026. She's been with Oakwood School since June 2021. And then letter C is a recommendation to accept the retirement resignation of Elaine Foltz from a position as media center liaison at Smith Elementary, effective June 30th, 2026. She has been with this school district since June 2019.
Can I get a recommendation, excuse me, can I get a motion for items 8A to 8C, please? Ms. Sauber?
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Takes us to number nine, Personnel Items, Recommendations.
Yes, I'll take number nine, letters A through H, under one motion. I'll go ahead and read them. Letter A, our supplemental contracts and volunteers recommending for the 2025-26 school year. Letter B is the amendment to some supplementals that we have. There are two personnel items. Letter C is the recommendation to employ Gary Flanagan as custodian at Oakwood Junior High, Oakwood High School, on a custodian pay scale level one, effective November 10th, 2025, pending completion and verification of required documents. Letter D is the recommendation to employ Michael Holmes as custodian at Harmon School on the custodial pay scale level five, effective November 10th, 2025, pending completion and verification of required documents. Letter E is the employment of home instruction tutors for the 25-26 school year on an as-needed basis at the established rate. Letter F is a recommendation made to approve the list of substitutes for the 25-26 school year, pending completion of required documents. Letter G is a tuition reimbursement for, to pay Jeremy Storiz for tuition reimbursement of $600 for graduate courses completed towards a master's degree during the 24-25 school year. And finally, letter A is a recommendation to employ the following employees to supervise Saturday school and detentions for the 25-26 school year at the established rate.
Can I get a motion for items 9A through 9H, please? Ms. Sauber?
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And that takes us to item number 10. And that is, can we get a motion to adjourn, please? Ms. Sauber?
Mr. Ryder Garcia?
Aye.
Ms. Kawhi?
Aye.
Ms. DiLorenzo?
Aye.
Dr. Middleton?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
The board will not be going into executive session. That is it. Thank you very much.